Are we going to get our monitors back? Oh, there we go. Yeah, we're good, I think. Call to order the meeting of the Verona Common Council for Monday, November 11, 2019, at 7:00 PM. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the roll.
Alder Person Cronin.
Present.
Alder Person Gaskell.
Here.
Alder Person Journey.
Here.
Alder Person Kemp.
Here.
Alder Person Cole.
Here.
Alder Person Posey.
Here.
Alder Person Ricky.
Here.
Alder Person Touche.
Got a full council, so that's excellent. We will move on to item four, which is Public Comment. This is the one and only time for public comment at the meeting, so if anyone wishes to comment on something, this would be the time to do so. And while I wait for someone to approach the microphone, I will say the police presence is due to police officer recognition, so we don't normally have this many police officers that are -- no one's gotten too rowdy at any of these meetings. But we are in public comment. If anyone wishes to speak, now would be the time to do so.
Name is Dan -- I did it wrong last time. Up here, yes?
Yeah.
Dan Sissel with DGR Verona. We are the prospective owners of the building for the Goodwill that's being renovated on Main Street. As a public comment, I also do have a few representatives from Goodwill here to help share information. While the renovation itself really hasn't garnered a whole lot of questions or comments, those that were -- I think we addressed them in Plan Commission. The questions and the comments and the concerns that we've heard, both on social media and we've heard from other residents, have really been outside that purview, but they're things that we felt compelled to address. And so I'm going to let some folks from Goodwill talk about a few of these items. The one thing I wanted to talk about was the tax impact. The building itself will be owned by a private entity. While Goodwill is a 501(c)(3), it is a nonprofit organization. Because it will be leasing the building, they will be paying taxes. They will be paying real estate taxes, just the same as any other retail tenant, so there is no tax impact. And quite frankly, with the investment that we're going to make in the hard asset, my suspicion is that the assessment will -- there would be assessment that goes up and we'll pay more taxes. So there are other issues related to wages, employment, the future of retail. I'm going to invite Janet to come on up and speak to those issues, as there's a lot of things that are circulating around that we want to make sure that we bring clarity to.
Thanks, Dan. Good evening. My name is Janet Duchene. I'm the VP of Brand and Mission Development for Goodwill of South Central Wisconsin. And as Dan mentioned, we just wanted to make sure that we were here to answer any questions that folks had. There is a couple of times a year, we see some content pop up, mostly on social media, about Goodwill and some other organizations around the country with some misinformation in it about who Goodwill is. So we thought it was very important to make sure that everyone understood here that we are Goodwill of South Central Wisconsin. We are a local 501(c)(3), so fully nonprofit organization. We operate in 14 counties in South Central Wisconsin, and only in 14 counties. So everything that we do, from the donations that are made here, to the jobs that we provide, the money, the goods, everything stays within the 14-county boundary. We are a local nonprofit. Our mission is around workforce development, largely for folks with disabilities, but also anyone with any barriers to employment. We try and assist with that with workforce training programs and job developers and so forth. No one who works for Goodwill or works for anyone with whom -- any employer where we would place someone is paid subminimum wage, not at all. And most of our employees are making market rates. The employees in our stores are paid comparable to other large retailers in the area like your Targets, your Marshalls, and so forth. We're a very competitive employer with professional positions all the way up to the corporate office up in Madison. So if anybody had any questions regarding that, again, we're here to answer that, clarify it. We just wanted to make sure that everyone understands who we are and who we're not. Thank you.
We are still in the public comment, so if anyone wishes to speak, now would be the time to do so. All right, I've counted off seven seconds, and nobody else seems to be approaching the podium. So with that, I'm going to move on to item five, which is approval of the minutes from the October 28, 2019 Common Council meeting. Questions, corrections, or motions?
Approve.
I think that was Alder Cole, and we'll say seconded by Alder Ricky. Last chance for corrections on the minutes. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the October 28, 2019 Common Council meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The minutes are approved. Under Mayor's business, I have a handful of items. We will start with six A, which is a Veterans' Proclamation, which I would like to read. Whereas veterans, both past and present, unselfishly and knowingly put their lives on the line to protect and preserve freedom, and whereas there are over 20 million veterans living in the United States and more than 350,000 veterans living in Wisconsin, and whereas we gratefully acknowledge the contributions and sacrifices made by our service members and their duty to our country, and whereas Veterans' Day, November 11, was established to honor all those who have served and those who continue to serve the country in war and in peace, and now therefore be it resolved that I, Luke Diaz, Mayor of the City of Verona, and on behalf of the Common Council, do hereby honor and thank all veterans for their service to our country. And with that, we'll move on to six B, which is the Police Officer Recognition Ceremony. Chief Coughlin.
Hi. Being that it is November 11, I also feel honored to wish everyone a happy Veterans' Day, especially those veterans who are serving and those who have served. So grateful for your commitment and sacrifice. Thank you, Mayor Diaz, and Common Council, for the opportunity I have tonight to recognize our two latest police officer recruits. It's my pleasure and honor to introduce Officers Tony Finger and Samantha Pickering. Tony and Samantha, would you come up front and join me? You can just stand here if you'd like. Both Officer Finger and Pickering began their career with the Verona Police Department on April 8, 2019, and completed several days of new employee orientation. On May 20, they started the 720-hour Police Basic Recruit Academy at Southwest Technical College in Fenimore, Wisconsin, and graduated on September 24. Both of them began the Verona Police Department Field Training Program immediately following the academy, and will be certified for solo patrol duties in approximately March of 2020. Prior to joining the Verona Police Department, Finger earned his Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice with a minor in Spanish from UW-Milwaukee in 2011. Following graduation from college, Tony worked in the Milwaukee County Jail and Courthouse for a nonprofit pretrial services organization, which provided case management services for defendants while out on bond. He also conducted pretrial investigations on new arrestees in the jail to determine bond and release conditions. In 2015, Tony began working in the Madison area for the Wisconsin Department of Corrections as a probation and parole agent. Tony earned certification as a Department of Corrections Security Threat Group Specialist. As an agent, he worked a diverse caseload with varying criminal offenses and offenders, including being the liaison agent for the Dane County Veterans Treatment Court. Prior to joining the Verona Police Department, Pickering attended UW-Whitewater and graduated in 2012 with a major in sociology and an emphasis in criminal justice. Upon graduation from college, Samantha began a career in loss prevention. She worked for several retailers in the Madison area as a loss prevention investigator, manager, or supervisor for six years prior to joining the Verona Police Department. Samantha was a key member of the Madison Area Loss Prevention Association, where she worked closely with law enforcement officers throughout the county. She received specialized training, interview, and interrogation techniques that she had opportunity to use frequently. Samantha has been a resident of Verona since July of 2016. Please join me in welcoming both Tony and Samantha to the City of Verona.
Raise your hand. Let me conduct her. Aye, Stephen.
Aye, Anthony Finger.
Having been appointed as a police officer for the City of Verona.
Having been appointed as a police officer for the City of Verona.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and good luck to the new officers. And with that, we will move on to item six C, which is the First LEGO League Team Presentation. And of course, if you could introduce yourselves as well.
Good evening. We are happy to be here. We are sharing our project with you. We are all residents of Verona and attend Savannah Oaks Middle School. My name is Will. This is Patrick, Carter, Jack, and Owen. And we are here today to share our project and get feedback on our proposal and answer any of your questions you have.
We are presenting here because our group is part of a robotics team participating in the first LEGO League competition in the region. Each year, we have to complete a research project in addition to our robotics challenge. This year's topic is City Shaper, where we choose a project to make our community better, to choose an element to make it more useful, or sustainable, or a better experience.
Our goal is to improve an underutilized space in our community. We chose the parking lot and blank wall behind AJ's Pizza. We wanted to make it a more productive and appealing space while also making it environmentally friendly. Some of the problems we identified with the site were cracked pavement in the parking lot, lack of shade, and excess heat, and no place to sit and/or eat. Runoff was also an issue that we identified and tried to address in our solution.
Our plan is to add a living wall on the backside of the building, which will use compost from food waste and rainwater to grow the plants, and add trees to the parking lot to make it more inviting, and reduce the heat island effect by angshade. Eliminate CO2 from cars with plants, and replace concrete with sustainable and permeable materials to reduce runoff and flooding. Carter is handing out a representation of what we plan to do.
We think our plan will help draw more users to the parking lot. The spaces are often more than half-empty, and we've rarely seen anyone in the site. By making it prettier and involving shade, benches, and things to look at, we think it will draw more customers to AJ's and Tuvalu, as also helping the community and environment by reducing waste, carbon dioxide, water runoff, and heat island effects.
Any questions?
Any questions from the council? Alder Ricky, and then Alder Posey?
Can I donate compost?
If you go to the site, they will have a bin, and you could probably put it in there.
Alder Posey?
Thank you. First, awesome presentation, guys. Thank you very much. I had no idea LEGO League. I'm familiar with the program, but I had no idea that you guys did community service like this, and a potentially sustainable program and project as well. Have you guys talked to the local businesses there, the restaurants, about their compost yet, their food waste? Is that part of what your research was?
We researched how much compost AJ's has thrown out over like a week or so, and then we used that to kind of try to find out how much waste we would be putting back into the environment.
Okay.
The total is 21,996 pounds per year.
Per year. Okay. Thank you.
Alder Cole?
Thanks for coming here. And it's kind of scary to get up and talk in front of people. I was wondering, what kinds of permeable materials have you guys researched that you think would be good for this site?
We researched about TPR, a material made out of plastic and glass, which is stronger than concrete or porcelain cement. And also, it produces less carbon dioxide when it's being created than porcelain cement. We also researched fly ash, which is basically -- it's harder to make, but it is stronger also than concrete or porcelain cement. But also, if this happened to get down to Arizona, we decided to do Farrokh. And the reason that it can't be made up here is because it's a private company that doesn't want to expand right now. So sometime, maybe in like in the future, we could get Farrokh, but that was the best option that we had based on a country perspective.
We also, for the beginning for our permeable pavers, we were thinking like, before we did any research, we were thinking we could do like bricks or something to stop runoff.
Thank you.
Alder Gaskell.
Thank you. Were you able to put together an estimated budget for your project?
Altogether, we decided that it was around $222,301.
We were looking for how to pay this by nonprofit organizations, because we were thinking it's a lot of money for the government or something bigger than that to do, and nonprofit volunteers would help a lot with that.
Other questions from the council? I'll just make a comment, I guess. I think it's excellent work. I think you guys have done an excellent job, and I think, you know, this is how you end up with a good downtown. It's minor improvement on top of minor improvement. And I just want to say, I'm super impressed by the research you've done. That's top-notch work. With that, thank you. And that finishes off Mayor's business. Next, we're on to item seven, which is announcements. Announcement. Alder Journey.
So Mr. Mayor, as a veteran and on behalf of veterans of Verona, would like to thank you for your proclamation. Also want to thank the Verona High School Choir for walking down the street and leading us in the National Anthem. And then also for the leadership staff and volunteers at the Senior Center for taking the lead in the ceremonies, both indoors and outdoors, to include the Quilts of Valor. Thank you very much.
Other announcements from the council? Seeing none, we will move on to the Administrator's Report. Mr. Sayre.
Thank you. I have a few updates tonight. First of all, we have our Budget Public Hearing next Monday, the 18th, at 7:00 PM. That is open to the public for any comments on the 2020 budget. The Mayor and I will be having a State of the City Presentation for the Chamber on November 19 at 7:30 AM at the Holiday Inn Express. Everyone is going to -- all the councils welcome to attend that if you'd like. We have a Parks Board meeting on November 20. We have a Plan Commission meeting on December 2. And then once again, we have one council meeting in -- I think I have a typo in here again. We have one council meeting in December, which is the 16th, not the 18th, and I think Alder Person Ricky pointed that out to me last time. So it is on the 16th of December, which is the third Monday of December. So we have that one meeting. Up there in the TIF fix, that did pass the Assembly last Thursday. So now the TIF bill is sitting on the Governor's desk, awaiting a signature. We have told the powers that be that we'd like a quick signature on that TIF legislation, so we can keep moving forward with kind of the refund process. Finance Committee did talk about that tonight, and staff is working on mailings for that. So we'd mail kind of paper checks as part of that process. That's the -- we've limited options of kind of how we can do this, and I think what we're going to do is have a mailing out to those property owners who have that overpayment. So there'll be more information on that in the coming meetings, but that is kind of our plan of attack at this moment to get that process moving. It is a -- it's going to take some effort on our end to kind of get it going, but that's the plan at least. Some employee anniversaries that we have, we have Larry Turner, the Building Inspector. He's been here a year. Justin Fairman, Police Officer, 12 years. Detective Joe Koper, he's been here 12 years. Sergeant Dart, he's been here 20 years. Officer Wetter has been here 16, and Officer Lovell has been here 10 years. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Questions from the council? I have one. I have two. Is alternate side parking in effect?
That's a good question. I don't know off the top of my head. Is it the 15th of November? The 15th is Chad's thinking. Alder Person Kemp.
Okay. So just a general warning to do the alternate side parking, because it's snowing. Winter seems like it got here pretty early, and we don't want to take it to anyone. And then I guess I have just a general comment. I want to say thank you in regards to the TIF fix, to everyone who supported it, but especially State Senator Urbanbach and State Assembly Rep Sande Pope, and people who supported it, like State Rep Diane Hesselbein, the DCCVA and the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. And thank you to Governor Evers for having it in his budget. Although he filed any news at the Capitol, it all kind of broke down. So I -- we had hoped, I think, to have an easy -- we had hoped to have an easy solution by getting it in his budget and just getting it done, but that wasn't how it worked out. And then, of course, thank you to city staff, especially Mr. Sayre, who stuck with it because it was a long and frustrating process. Any other questions on the Administrator's Report? Seeing none, we will move on to the Engineer's Report. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. So for some good news, County Highway M is now open in both directions, and Verona Road as well. The bridge that was being replaced by Dane County just west of Shady Oak Lane, that is complete, and so County Highway PD is now open for that portion. The County Highway PD project between Woods Road and County Highway M is continuing, so the contractor's working on stage two as well as some work in stage three. Stage two curb and gutter was poured in early November, and stage two paving was scheduled this past weekend. A traffic adjustment is scheduled for early this week for that project. And the high school project continues with paving work that is all weather-dependent. West Verona Ave is still in stage two, and West End Circle is still in stage one. And finally, for the Wall Six Pumping Station construction, the plumbing pipe work has been installed for the floor drains, and the foundation has been backfilled. Sanitary sewer construction started October 28 and is projected to be completed mid this week. So with that, I can take any questions.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none. We will move on to item 10, which is Committee Reports. And we will start with 10A Plan Commission. Alder Gaskell.
Thank you. The first item up for discussion and possible action is Resolution Number R-19-048, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number R-19-048, approving a certified survey map to create one lot at 1051-1053 Tamarack Way.
Oh, was it 47? The resolution was R-19-047?
I'm reading the Administrator's Memo.
Mr. Sayre?
Let me just check the packet here.
Okay.
Okay.
R-19-047.
Motion by Alder Gaskell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Oh, Mr. Sayre?
Just to point out, Alder Person Gaskell, I think all of them are going to be off one number, so.
Thank you. Just keep reminding me, because there are a lot of them.
We made a last bit of adjustment in the agenda. We forgot about that one.
All right. So that was 47. Okay, thank you.
Alder Gaskell.
Okay. The proposed certified survey map would combine the lots located at 1051 and 1053 Tamarack Way into one lot. Plan Commission discussed the CSM on November 4 and voted six to zero to recommend for the approval of the CSM.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number R-19-047, approving a certified survey map to create one lot at 1051-1053 Tamarack Way, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? And that motion passes. Alder Gaskell.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-19-048, approving an amendment to a precise implementation plan for facade changes at 118 South Main Street.
Motion by Alder Gaskell. Is there a second? Second by Alder Journey. Alder Gaskell.
The proposed precise implementation amendment would allow facade changes to the former World of Variety building located at 118 South Main Street. The proposed changes to the building include new paint, automatic entrance doors for donor access, gooseneck lighting, an indoor trash compactor, and landscaping improvements. Goodwill is the building tenant and would be leasing the property from a private developer. Retail uses are permitted by right in the central commercial zoning district, and Goodwill could use the building with or without the facade change approvals. If Goodwill were not making the facade changes, the council would not be reviewing this request. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on November 4 and discussed the projects. Comments from the Plan Commission included concerns about Goodwill not being the right use in this location, questioned if this use would pay property taxes on the building, was a market study done, concerns about traffic and access to the site, questions about what happens if the city denies the request, and opinion that the request meets the city's processes and standards, and direction for Goodwill to address the public relations issue. Plan Commission voted four to two to recommend for approval of the precise implementation plan amendment.
My understanding is Mr. Kleimeyer was going to make a statement as well, or perhaps not. Must have imagined it. Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Alder Kemp, then Alder Ricky?
I have a number of questions. If you have one, you should probably go first, so.
Alder Ricky?
I do have one. Just relating to concern that the property, if the property were to eventually be owned by Goodwill and thus tax exempt, I'm wondering if there's anything that the city can do, at least while the property remains in the TIF district, so the city continues to benefit from receiving property taxes on that large property.
Mr. Kleimeyer?
Sure. So my understanding is the property is in our downtown overlay district. One of the purposes that we identified in our -- there's a number of the purposes for creating the overlay district. One of them, since we have a downtown TIF, is to preserve existing and promote new tax bases within the city's downtown area. And my understanding is because the, in this case, the property owner is a for-profit entity and it's leasing it to a nonprofit, that the property will remain taxable, although I think it's a valid concern to, you know, to potentially be concerned whether that changes in the future while the TIF still exists, or if the state law changes. So I think one of the options that you would have here, if you wanted to consider it, would be to place a condition of approval on the PIP amendment to execute a tax agreement. We've -- I think our standard practice has been whenever we have a development that exists in the TIF district, that we ask the developer or the property owner to execute a tax agreement. that we ask the developer or the property owner to execute a tax agreement that indicates that if the property were to become non-taxable, that the taxes would continue to be paid at least through the life of the TIF district. And so I think that that would be available to the council tonight if it is inclined to approve the PIP amendment. You could add that as a condition.
Alder Kemp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions first. I guess I can ask Brian first. Has anyone on the city staff discussed with the developer what his long-term plan is with respect to the property itself?
I'm, I'm not aware of discussions recently. Adam might, Adam might be able to better answer this. But my understanding is there had been, there had been some developers in the past who have looked at this property and adjacent properties about potential redevelopment, but I'm not sure when that's happened recently.
Mr. Sayer?
I think the intent of the purchaser, the developer, is to lease it to Goodwill. I don't, you know, depending on how you define long-term, but their intent, I'd say, for at least the foreseeable future is to lease the property to Goodwill.
Okay. That, that goes right to my second question. Do you have an idea of how long this lease would be?
I don't.
From, from what was stated at the Plan Commission, I believe they were looking at a five to ten-year lease.
Okay. My understanding, at least in Sarah's description, was that there were some issues with respect to traffic and access to the building. Can, can someone give a brief description on what some of those concerns were?
Sure. The way this particular setup is that the donations are gonna occur in the front of the building. It won't be like your typical drive-through, like the one that's next to Home Depot. So some of the concerns were just generally that area gets rather congested and backed up at certain times of the day. Another concern was the trash compactor is located in the back of the building, and the, the truck will back into it, and while the truck is, you know, there, it will be blocking the sidewalk. And just in terms of general, you know, as this use potentially gets more popular, we're adding more traffic into that space again, and whether or not there would be enough parking spaces.
Okay. Sorry, I'm not trying to dominate the microphone. I just have a series of questions. Goodwill of South Central Wisconsin, how many locations do you guys have currently? I'm not sure if we know or.
If the applicant would like to answer that?
Tony Lawson with Goodwill. Currently, we have twelve locations in the fourteen counties that we're in.
Okay.
Thank you.
How many of those locations have, if I could, I'm sorry, how many of those locations have drive-throughs?
Currently, about five to six. I would have to look at my map to be specifics, but about half. We have a variety of buildings as far as front donation or side locations, depending on the area.
Okay. Yeah, how many, actually, that's a good question. How many are located in Dane County that you, locations?
In Dane County, currently, we have eight.
Okay. And of those eight, are, do those, any of those have drive-throughs for donations?
It's a mix.
Okay. Let's see. I think that's all for now. Someone may have other questions, so.
Sure.
Other, Alder Posey?
It might not necessarily be for you, so. My question actually has to do a bit with the traffic side. In preparation for this discussion, I, to do, because I live and work in Verona, as I've talked about previously, I go home on my lunches and I drive past St. Vinnie's, and likely, there will be clientele going from one to the other. Midday, that St. Vincent de Paul store can see twenty-eight cars on a weekday, midday. And knowing the traffic issues that we have currently in that zone that this store is proposed, that's my greatest concern, is both congestion as well as safety. So I don't know what research has been done or if this is just going to be an ongoing thing as far as directional signage and municipal parking. I just want to kind of make sure that we've got our eye on that.
Other, Alder Cole, and then Alder Cronin?
I'm wondering what the typical times of day are, that the, the trucks would be backing up and blocking the sidewalks. Is it during the day? Is it during, like rush hour times in morning and afternoon? When would those times be?
If the applicant would like to.
To clarify, the compactor truck would be the one that would actually be backing in, and poles of the compactor two to three times a week, and the pole takes, I don't know, somewhere between seven and ten minutes, tops. So it's, this is not like an hours-long type thing. The, the loading, the actual box trucks that will be loading, they'll have a lift gate, and they'll be, again, per our application, limited in timeline. But our, our box trucks will be on the street.
Alder Cronin, then Alder Gaskell?
My question entails the issue of, I do understand from your application that you have quite a bit of open hours to accept donations. But there is the possibility that there might be items, including large items, that get dropped off when you are closed. And then, is it my understanding that this would then be put upon the Verona Police Department to follow up with that for the issues of preventing?
So we do not task any police department. We have our own internal law section and security and safety department that would follow up on that internally to, we're open for those hours for convenience. And typically, in this area, in the fourteen counties that we do, we don't typically see anything that's left after hours. Sure, you're gonna get your random bags, things like that, but we don't see it currently as an issue based on our weather. People usually adhere to those donation hours. But no, we don't, we wouldn't task that onto the local police departments. We don't currently in the villages that we currently run operations in.
I think that's counter to the memo we got, so if that's an update, that's good to know. Because the memo specifically said that it would be considered vandalism, and it would follow up with the Verona Police Department, so.
Typically, we follow any village codes as far as what they recommend. Goodwill itself, we don't task that on the police department to follow up with any of that.
Alder Gaskell?
Yes, thanks. Mr. Sizzle, a question for you, please. Per the discussion around a tax agreement, would you have any opposition to that?
We would, I'd have to double-check. I think the, the TIF district expires in twenty-four. Is that accurate? So in, in that case, then it would be, it would be acceptable.
Okay. And can you just go into a little bit more detail? I think there's a lot of public concern that we cannot, as a community, support two similar retail businesses between Vinnie and Goodwill. And so can you elaborate a little bit on your market study that shows that, yes, you think that we'd be able to support this store here?
Sure. So demography is, is one of the measurements. And so we look at who the donors are going to be, the potential donors, because in donation retail and resale, the merchandise itself is really the most valuable item. And so, again, and I think at, at Plan Commission, we ran through that the donors are a subset of people that, that are growing right now in Verona. So we, we see the donor demand, if you will, growing. And at the same time, on the sales side, because of the, the widening acceptance of resale, whether it be in, in traditional retailers like, that are, that are putting the store within the store through thread-up, or if it's actual TJ Maxx, Marshalls, Ross Dress for Less, these are places that are, by and large part, they are second-hand sales. And so the, the combination of those two things provide a tailwind that Verona is specially suited for. And when we looked at and we studied the market area, our closest store is in Fitchburg on PD. That store in and of itself is undersized. It's small. So we already have a latent demand from both shoppers and donors. And then, we consider Verona and the surrounding communities that trade to Verona to be a separate market that's viable with St. Vinnie's. The last thing I'll add is that we are operating in a couple of different markets. The most recent of which that we opened was Stoughton, where, again, St. Vinnie's is open and operating. We, we opened Stoughton, look at Tony, springtime of this year, and, and we've had very, we've been very successful. Actually, no, it's been a full year.
Spring of last year.
Spring of last year. Yeah, we've been a full year, and, and we've had, all sales are where we projected them to be.
Is that a question for the applicant or a statement? Alder Cole?
I have two.
Okay.
One, I was just wondering with the, the loading trucks, not the compactor trucks, will those be blocking up traffic at any certain points of the day, like where you're gonna be loading and unloading?
So, so the answer is no, they won't be blocking traffic in so much as they're, they're not gonna be. Like when Miller &amp; Sons, and in fact, we've coordinated with Carl Miller at Miller &amp; Sons, who, who also is really supportive of what we're doing. But in going through the process, we coordinated with him to make sure that, because he's the largest user of that space.
And my other question was for Mr. Sayer. Alder Gaskell mentioned that, I mean, this essentially is just coming before us because of facade changes. So if there were no facade changes, it would just be going in, and we wouldn't be discussing this at all. Just based on the amount of, you know, public comments I've gotten from constituents, emails, phone calls, interactions, I just, there was, there's a lot of concerns from the community. And I'm wondering if you could just elaborate on, even if for some reason, you know, this doesn't get approved, it, it could, they could still move in. It's just that the facade wouldn't be changed or the building wouldn't be updated. Is, is that correct? Is that how I'm understanding it?
Yeah, correct. You are correct. So it's, it's a retail use, and retail uses are permitted by right in that, in the central commercial zoning district. That's a district that, quite honestly, is our most flexible district. It doesn't have any minimum parking requirements. The setbacks are very, very small. If there's a redevelopment project, so there's smaller setbacks, no parking. So, for example, if, if Goodwill would have just, you know, gone to the building inspector and said, "Hey, I want to pull some building permits. I need to, you know, do some work on the roof. I need to do some work inside with some electrical or plumbing." They would have just pulled those permits, and they would have gotten their occupancy permit, and they could have opened up. I mean, the only, the only reason it's here is, is that it's part of that plan development. So once, once they start making those changes to the outside of the building, especially that donor door, and especially kind of that southern facade where you have the, the trash compactor, those are the, the big ones that, that really kind of trigger that precise implementation plan amendment. You know, I think even if they're just coming in and painting the building, there's a good chance it wouldn't, wouldn't have come here. The gooseneck lighting, quite honestly, that was a condition from back in oh-three that was, it was never put in place. So we would have probably okayed that as well, too. But you're spot on. In, in essence, that if they weren't changing that outside of the building, it, it wouldn't have gone to Plan Commission. It wouldn't have gone to the council, and ultimately, you know, staff would have issued those permits because it is allowed by right. Retail use is allowed by right in, in this district, which means that it's no different than if you buy a house. You have a right to use that house for all those permitted uses in that zoning district, so long as you kind of meet the standards with it as well, too. In this case, since there's no parking requirements, you know, we don't even look at parking. We just look at, you know, does the use fit? If it fits, they can go in, you know. Look at the Matt's house. We had, we have some retail uses in there. Those didn't come to the council and Plan Commission because they're permitted by right. You know, we've got our uses downtown as well that have gone in over the years that, you know, don't come to the Plan Commission and council. So, correct. If, if, if they weren't making these changes and the improvements to the building, they could just have moved in and pulled their permits, the inside work, and could have opened up once that was done.
Yeah, Alder Cole?
Would you, are you able to comment on, for Mr. Sayer again, or share any about, anything about maybe other people who have possibly looked at the site, what the outcomes are? I know there's, I mean, just been getting lots of comments, "Well, why didn't the city do this?" Or "Why hasn't somebody done this?" I didn't, and what's been the process? It's been vacant for a while. I'm assuming people have come through and looked at it, and I'm wondering if you could comment on what's been going on?
Sure. I mean, I think, I think it's a vacant about two years now. And when World of Variety, I think they closed all their stores around, you know, southwestern Wisconsin. I think they had a couple, they had a location in Fenimore, or Horvath, and I think a couple other spots as well in, in Verona. So they closed all the kind of World of Variety stores, and part of the, I'm not gonna speak to why it closed, but there's a lot of changes right now going on in the retail landscape that have created a lot of challenges, especially for smaller retail businesses. I think the initial conversation actually, you know, got to the council, and we talked about a redevelopment project as part of this property and as part of the hardware store to the west as well. That was, Dean Slaby was kind of looking at that project that was looking for some potential, you know, TIF incentives as well from the city. Ultimately, that project didn't, didn't go forward, I think, for, for at least a few, couple different reasons. One being kind of the TIF, second kind of being needing some design changes to the building as well, too. So there was a kind of a combination factor there. In between that project and now, I've talked to, you know, personally, at least three or four different kind of developers looking at trying to redevelop the property. In that meantime, the hardware store to the west has sold. Tom Dorn owns that now and operates, obviously, the hardware store. So that property, in essence, has been kind of taken out of that redevelopment equation. The developers I've talked to about this site by itself, it's about, I think, two-thirds, three-quarters of an acre. It's, that's tough to redevelop. I mean, the price, the asking price at the time, I think, was in that one to one-point-five million dollar range. And it just, that makes it, makes it difficult to try to put something together on a site that's that small, try to get the units to work, and then try to get the, the commercial space to work, and then the parking, and everything else that kind of goes into redevelopment. I think I made this comment at the Plan Commission meeting. If I didn't, I'll make it now. The last developer I worked with on this, they were looking at it. They, they couldn't get the numbers to work. They wouldn't share even the number with me of what the TIF request would be. They just said it was kind of completely, just, just flat out, just wouldn't work from a standpoint of they couldn't even present it to me because it was, I want to say outrageous, but it was so high. So they ultimately walked away for that reason, and they also started running into concerns as they looked at the redevelopment of that property by itself. I think the comment I got from them was it was starting to look really funny. As a building that was just kind of standing there by itself, that was probably gonna be three, four, or five stories tall, however tall it was gonna be, having this one building in this small parcel kind of sticking out by itself, they started to have concerns about, you know, as a company, do they really want to do this? And was it just gonna kind of look goofy by itself? You know, I did work with one business who was looking at this as well. They were gonna actually reuse the space. They, they couldn't make the numbers to work. I mean, there was some, there's some, I think, they had some concerns about the condition of the roof and whatnot, but they couldn't get the numbers to work. We, we've had a lot of people look at it. I mean, it's a tough space. It's a tough space to redevelop by itself, you know, kind of with where, kind of the, the price is at that of just the size of the property and trying to get those numbers to work. That's why that hasn't happened. You know, we've had, we've had Dollar Tree looking at, I think we approved plans a year ago for a Dollar Tree that couldn't make the, the street loading work. That was that four-hour kind of street loading window they were looking for. Actually, right before this came forward, we had published a public hearing, I believe, for Dollar Tree to come back and try to actually lease the space again. And then, I think with the applicant looking at buying the property, I think that kind of probably kicked out that potential lease. But, you know, we've, we've talked to a lot of people, but it's tough to find someone to fill thirteen, fourteen thousand square feet. I mean, you're not gonna find your typical mom and pop to look at that kind of space. I had talked to at one point a fitness user, a boutique kind of fitness user looking at that space as well. I don't know what happened to that one, but I mean, there, there's been a variety of people that have looked at this thing, but it's a big space. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not a simple two to three thousand square foot building to fill. It's thirteen, fourteen thousand square feet, and it's sizable. So I guess as I ramble on here, the bottom line is there's been a lot of people that have looked at this over the years, and unfortunately, none have come to fruition. I think the, I think, I think approving this, I think you do have the opportunity still to potentially redevelop the site. I don't think this prohibits that in the, in the long term. You know, you have, you have a developer, and I've been on their website. They've done our projects elsewhere. I mean, that's a conversation in the future as well of, you know, they have a tenant. If there's an opportunity potentially for their properties in areas that come available, maybe that's a conversation that could be had. By itself, right now, I, I think it's tough to redevelop the site just because of the size.
Alder Cole?
And just to summarize, I guess, what you're saying by businesses who can't make the numbers work, that's based on the asking price of, that the seller is asking, and the condition of the building is kind of what I'm gathering? Is that right?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, it's a, any redevelopment, yeah, correct. Any redevelopment project is challenging because you're, you're buying, buying a land and typically building that you're, you're gonna be knocking down the building, which is an asset, and there's a, a value to that. And that's why redevelopment anywhere is just challenging because you're not, if you go out in the greenfield, buy greenfield land, you're paying just for the raw land versus redevelopment is, can be more costly because you're buying buildings with it.
Other, Alder Journey?
So I listened to the whole Plan Commission.
Mike?
I listened to the whole Planning Commission thing, and it helped me draw some conclusions on this project. I listened to the whole Planning Commission thing and it helped me draw some conclusions on this project. Then there's been a lot of negative feedback on it to include traffic congestion, pedestrian, so on like that. The person I feel really bad for is a guy that's going to have to make a left-hand turn coming out onto Main Street. And also that there might be a more acceptable location. However, if, if we don't move forward, that building is just going to remain status quo. And then I started seeing more positive things, like the company is committing $1 million for building and property improvements and they're not seeking taxpayer assistance on that. Goodwill is a servant-oriented business aimed at providing community service and promotes an inclusionary approach for donors and customers. It will prevent another blight area in Verona. The staff has been willing to work with the city staff to be compliant with city standards and to be sensitive to citizen concerns regarding the look on Main Street. The building enhancement and business potential for neighboring business owners is there. If they're going to come to Goodwill, Dorn Hardware is right next door and they can walk down Main Street and have an opportunity for a bunch of other different services. Also, they're, the organization Goodwill does promote education and employment opportunities for Verona residents. And, you know, based upon that, I would have a tendency to support the PIP.
Other questions or comments? Alder Posey?
Yes, I'd just, I want to go back to the parking and traffic flow. What would be the next steps if we are seeing additional, what, I mean, there will be additional congestion and likely at inopportune times of day where, you know, it's not easy to make a left and people are sitting there waiting or maybe now the delivery truck's coming in. What, what are those next things that happen? And whose responsibility does that fall upon and cost and everything else?
Mr. Sayer?
So you'll have kind of two potential lefts out there. You have the left, you have the left that's kind of shared with Park Bank there. That's an access point that is an easement, I believe, between kind of both those parties or one of those parties. But that's a shared access point between Park Bank and this, this property to the south. That one, that one's going to be unchanged because it's, is that shared kind of access point. There's limited options we, we have on that one. That one is, you know, we, we know it's a concern. We've identified that repeatedly as part of a multiple kind of, kind of designs of the downtown and those plans. We also have Park Lane here as well, which obviously has that left, potential left and that potential through to get to East Park Lane. Those are ones that we can kind of take a look at. Typically with the, you know, if it's a public safety, those are items we can look at as part of that. I think what you're going to see is people just aren't going to be making lefts out of that. Probably what you're going to see is more of this coming through Park Lane than coming up, I believe, Marietta off the back and then making a right to kind of go out the back. I think you're going to see more of that. I think you're going to see potentially people sneaking kind of through the bank parking lot, kind of through that location as well, and avoiding that left to try to get to that right-hand turn movement. But it, it's going to be challenging. We've got a couple other ones in town as well that we know are challenging at certain times of day. I mean, if you look at the gas station as well, that's a challenging spot. And, you know, I think as those redevelop, that we've been trying to take a, you know, hard line and try to get those closed down. But as issues come up, we'll do what we can with them. But there's going to be no, there's no, you know, hard, fast solution to it because you can't close them all. And it's easy, a lot easier to close them when you have redevelopment opportunities out there.
I'm going to call it myself and then Alder Gaskell. I voted against this at the Plan Commission meeting because of concerns about traffic that have kind of been discussed and also concerns about pedestrians getting through Park Lane. I feel like we've spent a lot of time and effort making our downtown more friendly to people who walk and bike, in addition to adding additional parking. And I just, I just feel like this is a big step backwards and I, that's, that's why I opposed it. Alder Gaskell?
Two things. In regards to parking, that's something we should just keep in mind when we get around to redeveloping the New Century School, Sugar Creek parcel. Maybe that's the time when we can look at traffic in that general, larger area of how you access these sites because potentially there'll be a lot of people going to that site. And then this is a question for the tenant, or potential tenant. There's a lot of feedback at Plan Commission. We've all talked about, you know, the number of emails we've gotten from constituents. And again, this is, I've been on council now for three years and this is the single issue where I've had the most comment and the most emails. And I will say, all of them, other than the business owners adjacent to the parcel, have been not wanting us to vote for it. So based on that, have you had any time to think about how, when you land in Verona, if you land in Verona, what, how you're going to soften your impact in terms of public perception?
Oh, we certainly have started thinking about it. Anytime that we go into a community, we do everything from working with local, other local nonprofits, working with the schools. We've been working very hard in some of the communities we're in, working with school counselors, helping students get jobs, whether those are students that just want some part-time work. Or in Middleton, we have four students who are students with challenges who are supported by school staff and they come into the store and they, they work hours with their own support team with them. So there are a lot of ways that we reach out. We work in various communities supplying shopping vouchers through other community partners who work directly with constituents in that community. So it might be a health and human services agency. It may be parole officers. It may be a women's shelter or a, another family service organization where we provide that funding. So there are a lot of things that we do in the communities and all of that groundwork will start to be laid as soon as we have something signed on the dotted line. We do a lot of work ahead of time with that. Along with that, it will absolutely be working to reach out to the community at large. We'll be, we can look at doing mailings. We can look at doing information in the paper. We can do listening sessions. We can help educate the community about who we are as an organization to dispel some of the misconceptions that might have played into some of the negative emails that you got because again, there is some misinformation out there. We also want to make sure that we share some of the imagery and the branding that I think you saw in the email that was sent to you today so that people understand that this is not a gray dingy grandpa's, this is not an old-style shopping experience that we present. This is an upscale. It is resale, but resale is the future. I think we shared in the letter that some of the research that's coming out shows that it's anticipated that by 2028, resale will actually outscale traditional retail, at least in larger markets. So it is up and coming. It will be a fresh, bright shopping experience. And so we will share all of that with the community, help lay that groundwork well before we're ever open.
Alder Cronin?
So while I do appreciate the fact that Goodwill could bring potentially many jobs to Verona, I have the same opposition to this project as I did to the Dollar Tree, which is the traffic and pedestrian concerns. The drop-off door is very close to both West Park Lane and Main Street and you're going to have people getting in and out of their cars and people trying to go around them, trucks coming and blocking traffic because there are, while you may have a, a smaller window for when you take deliveries, there is Millers, there are times when that street is blocked. As a downtown resident, I live right behind the Walgreens. I see how much pressure traffic is under in central Verona. And I just don't think that adding a business that's going to add to that congestion and potentially create safety issues for drivers and pedestrians is something I can support.
Other questions or comments from the council? If I may, before we get to the voting, if we wanted to add a deed restriction or something that had been previously mentioned about leaving it as a tax-paying entity, how would we proceed to that? My understanding is people wanted to add that to the motion?
You want to amend the motion for the tax agreement?
Tax agreement, okay.
Just to be clear, the tax agreement would need to be with the property owner, not with the tenants?
Okay. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Can I get some wording on that, please?
So we're, we're talking about amending the existing, the existing motion is to approve the PIP. We're talking about amending that existing motion to include execution of a tax agreement with the property owner? Is that correct? So motion, motion to amend, the, the motion that is on the table to approve the PIP amendment with the addition that a tax agreement be executed between the city and the property owner?
Does it suffice to say, as Mr. Kleinemeyer stated? Or do I have to say it? Because that was really fast.
I think that's fine. I mean, I mean, sometimes I'd rather have the attorney do all the motions, but... Is there a second? Second by Alder Journey. We are debating the motion to the amendment, so not the main motion. Any questions or comments on the motion? Alder Journey?
So I would just like one clarification. So we're voting on the facade of the building. Is that correct?
For the main PIP we are, but for the thing we're talking about right now, it's to amend the PIP so that, to execute a tax agreement.
Right, yeah.
So if, if you were to approve this amendment to the motion, that does not mean that you are approving the PIP amendment. That just means the first motion that was made and seconded to approve the PIP amendment, there would be addition to that, that the tax agreement has to be executed. If this amended motion gets approved, then we will go back to the initial motion. And just because you vote one way on the amendment doesn't require you to vote the same way on the initial motion, just to be clear.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on this amendment? Seeing none? All those in favor of the amendment by Alder Gaskell signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion has been amended. We are back on the main motion for the PIP. Any further discussion? Alder Journey?
So then just one more clarification. If, if the, we're, we're voting on the facade of the building, is that correct?
So we're voting on the PIP amendment, but two of the, I think as Mr. Sayer had indicated, the PIP amendment contain, if you look at the, the application that was filed, it contains, it looks like eight bullet points talking about the work that they would like to do. That it looks like the two biggest changes that they're going to be making to the building include the facade and in particular, as it relates to the new roll-up overhead door and also the dedicated donor entry. So you are voting on the facade, but as Mr. Sayer had indicated before, if for one reason or another this motion does not pass and the, and the council does not approve the PIP amendment, that does not prevent Goodwill and the property owner from executing a lease and Goodwill moving into this building. It just means that the PIP amendment would be denied. So certain things that are in the PIP amendment, including the facade and the donor door, would not be, those changes could not be made to the building.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments on the motion? Going once, going twice? Since I think this will be a divided vote, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. If the clerk would read the roll?
Alder Gaskell?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
No.
Alder Cole?
No.
Alder Posey?
No.
Alder Riki?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
No.
Alder Cronin?
No.
And so by my ability to count, I'm going to say that fails three to five. With that, we will move...
I, I, if I, can I make a statement? I, I would tell you that I, so essentially by the motion not passing, you are effectively denying the PIP amendment. I, I would give, what I've heard primarily from folks who cast a vote not in favor of the PIP amendment, sounds like primarily there were traffic concerns and, and, and some of the people mentioned that those traffic concerns that they had seemed to then relate to pedestrian issues that, you know, would qualify as public safety concerns. I, I do think that it's, it's appropriate to inform the applicant of the reason why the, the motion did not pass. And one mechanism that the council can use to do that is we have obviously had a motion to approve. It did not pass. I still think, even though you, you have the ability, since we are still on this agenda item, if you want to, to make a motion to deny the PIP amendment and actually give a reason on the record. And so I, I want to, I want, I just, I feel like that's an appropriate thing to make you aware of in case you want to do it.
If I can ask a follow-up question, is that your advice as our attorney?
I think it's, I would. I mean, right now you have a, a motion that did not approve and you do not have a formal reason for denying the motion. And the benefit of the motion to deny would be to state on the record why you had the denial.
Thank you. We are still on this agenda item. Any motions from any Alders? Alder Kemp?
I'm sorry, you're asking for a motion or a reason for?
I believe that it would be a motion to deny with a reason.
Well, well, I think, I mean, and, and you could certainly have a motion in a second right away. I think you also have the ability, if you want right now, to discuss whether or not you even think as a council, you want to have that motion. And so I don't want to skip ahead. I just wanted to kind of jump in and, and offer that as a possibility because again, not to, you know, I just, I think it is a good idea to give a, a reason why you're not voting in favor of it.
I agree with that, but I'm asking, I'm just asking, do I need to ask for a motion to discuss or to give a reason?
No, I, I think you can actually just have a discussion without the motion actually being made first.
We are, we haven't, we haven't moved on, so we're still on the item. Alder Kemp?
Yeah, well, again, it's, I have a lot of the same concerns with the, the traffic congestion in that area. I know that this is a very busy, busy area in the city of Verona. My concerns for public safety, I mean, that's, we just went over the budget. We spent 40% of our budget, I believe, on public safety. This, this site in particular and the location with what they're asking for seemed to be something that, that drew a lot of concern for me. I mean, I, I, the emails that we received from constituents, that's one thing, but this is wholly different. And so my concerns for public safety was my primary reason. Thank you.
Alder Posey?
So my, really, I did understand that this was related to the facade. And what I didn't hear in this related to that is kind of looking at that holistically with relation to the parking lot. If you shopped there when it was World of Variety, it was already a tight parking lot. Looking again at a similar store that handles 28 cars on, you know, it was a Wednesday at noon-ish, you know, this is going to be a really tight parking lot and I think there are adjustments that can be made in there to, and I did not hear that this evening, is what was going to be done to help with that. And that, again, can relate to what you could possibly make adjustments to rather than just moving in and not taking a look at that.
Alder Cole?
I would just echo the public safety concerns. I'm on the public safety committee, so I kind of try to view it through that lens. And my concern was, again, with the, the drop-off door being so close to Park Lane and Main Street. I think that was echoed by another Alder. Having a business there that's going to be having like drop-offs and shopping and loading, which seems like a lot for one store in a very congested, small area of our downtown. And I could just see it creating a lot of like traffic and pedestrian concerns.
Other questions, comments, or potential motions from the council?
So you, you've certainly gone on the record now and have a little bit more explanation as to the, the traffic safety concerns. You don't have to make a motion, but, and if, if you were to, you could make a motion to, to the effect of motion to deny the precise implementation plan amendment due to the traffic and public safety concerns discussed on the record.
And if I may, would that include potentially for people who are walking as well?
Yeah, because I, well, I, I do think it would. That's why it's just, it's not just the traffic, it's also the public safety concerns. What I've heard at the discussion tonight and, and somewhat at the Plan Commission was a concern of how potential traffic backups in this area, and, and I think Ms. Posey said it very well, because of, there's a lot of, I mean, I think Goodwill, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I think Goodwill does a lot of good things and so they do create a lot of people coming to their store. But at this particular location, you could have traffic issues and then that could negatively impact pedestrians. So I think that the public, reference to public safety also covers pedestrians.
Thank you. Questions? Alder Gaskell?
Just a clarification from Mr. Sayer. So just, we have basically lost the opportunity to make this building look better than it currently looks because tomorrow Goodwill could still move in, essentially. Is that correct?
Mr. Sayer?
Yes, I could.
Questions, comments, motions? Questions, comments, motions, Alder Journey?
So then, my question is, if we, are we going to vote on the amendment? Is that what, we're, we're not going to vote on that? If we're just making a comment, or?
That is up to the body. If someone wants to make a motion, we will vote on the motion, assuming it gets a second. If nobody makes a motion, I cannot make motions myself, and so we will event, eventually move on. But, anyone interested in taking a crack at a motion?
And again, you don't, I mean, you, you don't have to do it. You, you, you do have now a further discussion on the record.
All right, going once, going twice, and we will move on to the next item. We'll move on to item three, which is Alder Gaskell.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number R dash one nine dash zero four nine, approving a final plat for the Whispering Cove's plat, creating two hundred and forty-three lots contingent upon the following conditions. The final plat shall become effective upon annexation of the two point three-two-five acres of land for Morningside Boulevard. Number two, the final plat should become effective upon the execution of a development agreement. And number three, the final plat shall become effective upon execution of the Morningside Boulevard Road Agreement.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second? Second by Alder Journey. Alder Gaskell?
Thank you. The proposed final plat would create two hundred and fourteen lots and twenty-nine outlets for the Whispering Cove's plat located west of County Highway M and south of County Highway PD. Two hundred and nine lots would be developed as single-family homes, while the remaining lots would be for a potential school, future condo development, multifamily, and commercial. Plan Commission discussed the final plat on November fourth and voted six to zero to recommend for the approval with the aforementioned conditions.
And the conditions were part of the motion? Just to clarify. Excellent, thank you. Motion before the body? Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, I guess we have talked about this one a lot. All those in favor of Resolution Number R dash one nine dash zero four nine, approving a final plat for Whispering Cove's plat, creating two hundred and forty-three lots with the conditions specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Let the record show, it passed seven to one, with Alder Touche voting no. Alder Gaskell?
Thank you, just a procedural question. The, for most of these next items, the conditions are the same, do I need to read them each time, or can I reference the R dash one nine dash zero?
Mr. Kleinemeyer?
So, I'm, I'm looking at the packets, and you're correct that the conditions are identified in the resolution itself. So, I think that you can make a, a motion to approve the resolution, and you could, if you wanted to, you could say with the conditions contained therein, but you don't have to restate them.
Thank you, I think maybe number six, there's a fourth one, is that correct? So, when I get there, please remind me to read them all again.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay.
Item four.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number R dash one nine dash zero five zero, approving a general development plan located west of County Highway M and south of County Highway PD that would allow for the construction of two hundred and nine single-family units with the same conditions.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp, Alder Gaskell?
The proposed general development plan would allow for the construction of two hundred and nine single-family units in the Whispering Cove subdivision. A zoning exemption would be granted as part of the GDP to reduce side yard setback to an eight-foot setback instead of ten feet. Plan Commission held the required public hearing on November fourth and voted six to zero to recommend for the approval of the GDP with the aforementioned conditions.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Alder Ricky?
I am just wondering if, I guess, I'd like to make a motion that a, a fourth condition be added to include that, that the applicant finalized details for stormwater management modeling with the city engineer?
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole. Anything to add, Alder Ricky?
I don't know if that needs to be added with all of the other conditions on each motion, or if this is the one it applies to.
Mrs. Sayer?
I think we're pretty close on meeting that already, I think, I'll defer to Ms. Fisher if there's any additional comments on that, but we're in a position that, the reason we didn't put that on there is that we, we thought we were pretty close on not needing that condition, I think they're at, what, ninety-five percent? Not close to that?
Yeah, the, the overall is basically approved, I'm just waiting for the stamped and signed version, and then it'll be approved, and then for each phase, we will review the construction plans and make sure that they fit within that overall plan. It doesn't hurt to add it, I don't think.
Alder Cole?
Yes, my question was about setbacks, are we probably still in the place, need to vote on Alder Ricky's thing first?
Any questions or comments on Alder Ricky's motion? I'll just add, I think, I think it's good, I think, a, a, as noted, it, it is very close to being resolved, but better safe than sorry, and, you know, with, with some of the issues we have with flooding, and what I've heard from, from various constituents, we, I, I'd rather be safe than sorry, so I think it's good. Any questions or comments on Alder Ricky's motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to add the condition as read by Alder Ricky, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
And that motion passes. And we are back on the main agenda item. Alder Cole?
I just wanted to make sure that, so the, everybody's okay with the eight-foot versus ten-foot setbacks, is that going forward, going to be the new kind of norm within developments?
Mr. Sayer?
No, I mean, that's, so, the code has a ten-foot setback provision. I think because of the kind of the code being featured they have in here, they need some reduced setbacks along those side yards for that, that reason, I know we've talked about with that reduced setback with a, with a different development project as well. But, you know, as we look at the zoning code rewrite, I'm sure that's going to come up of just, you know, if you're granting these, you know, should we just allow that kind of as part of the code, that, that's a future conversation, so.
Alder Cole?
And one more question, are there any private roads within this development, are these all public?
Mr. Sayer?
They're all public.
Any additional questions or comments on the main motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number R dash one nine dash zero five zero, approving a general development plan located west of Highway M, County Highway M, and south of County, County Highway PD, that would allow for the construction of two hundred and nine single-family units with the conditions specified and as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
And that motion passes, seven to one. Alder Gaskell?
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number one nine dash nine five nine four nine? Sorry, is it nine five zero or nine four nine?
Mr. Sayer, or clerk Clark?
Which number are we on?
We're on number five.
It's nine five zero, this is an.
An ordinance. Nine five zero, thank you. We're zoning forty-six point six-two-one acres from rural agricultural to public institutional, and seventy-six point four-two-nine acres from rural agricultural to neighborhood residential for the Whispering Cove subdivision located in the north neighborhood south of County Highway PD, west of County Highway M, and north of Kettle Creek North subdivision with the aforementioned conditions.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp, Alder Gaskell?
The proposed zoning map amendment would rezone forty-six point six-two-one acres to public institutional and seventy-six point four-two-nine acres to neighborhood residential in the Whispering Cove subdivision. Plan Commission held the required public hearing on November fourth and voted six to zero to recommend for the approval with the aforementioned conditions.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of ordinance number one nine dash nine five zero, rezoning forty-six point six-two-one acres from rural agricultural to public institutional, and seventy-six point four-two-nine acres from rural agricultural to neighborhood residential for the Whispering Cove subdivision located in the north neighborhood, south of County Highway PD, west of County Highway M, and north of the Kettle Creek North subdivision, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Alder Gaskell, item six?
Thank you, I'd like to move approval of ordinance number one nine dash nine, let me look up now, five one, rezoning fourteen point two acres of land to suburban commercial and seven point five acres of land to urban residential located in the Whispering Cove subdivision. Oops, sorry, I did that wrong, let me back up. All right, fourteen point two acres of block one, lot one, of the Whispering Cove subdivision of budding County Highway M from rural agricultural to suburban commercial, and seven point five acres of block two, lot two, of the Whispering Cove subdivision from rural agricultural to urban residential.
And was this one?
Subject to the aforementioned conditions and the additional condition of, for the properties owned U R, the property owner shall install and maintain a multifamily notification sign as outlined in the city's residential development policy.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second? Second by Alder Journey? Alder Gaskell?
The proposed zoning map amendment would rezone fourteen point two acres of land to suburban commercial and seven and a half acres of land to urban residential located in the Whispering Cove subdivision. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on November fourth and voted six to zero to recommend for the approval with the aforementioned conditions.
Thank you for that explanation. Motion before the body? Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of ordinance number one nine dash nine five one, rezoning fourteen point two acres of block one, lot one, of the Whispering Cove subdivision of budding County Highway M from rural agricultural to suburban commercial, and seven point five acres of block two, lot two, of the Whispering Cove subdivision with, from rural agricultural to urban residential, with the conditions specified by Alder Gaskell, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
And that motion passes, seven to one. Alder Gaskell?
All right, last one. This is, I am making a motion to approve ordinance number dash one nine dash nine five two, approving the annexation of two point three-two-five acres of land to be used for right-of-way for Morningside Boulevard in the Whispering Cove subdivision, subject to the following conditions. Number one, all fees associated with the annexation in the Morningside Boulevard Road Agreement, including legal, engineering, et cetera, shall be paid. Number two, the annexation shall become effective upon the city acquiring the property.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Journey, I think. Alder Gaskell?
The proposed annexation would annex two point three-two-five acres of land from the town of Verona to be used for Morningside Boulevard. This Boulevard Road is the east-west road serving the Whispering Cove development. The Plan Commission discussed the annexation on November fourth and voted six to zero to recommend for the approval with the aforementioned conditions.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of ordinance number one nine dash nine five two, approving the annexation of two point three-two-five acres of land to be used for the right-of-way for Morningside Boulevard in the Whispering Cove subdivision with the conditions specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Nope.
And that motion passes, seven to one. Anything further, Alder Gaskell?
No, thank you.
Next, we will move on to ten B Finance Committee, Alder Kemp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and excellent job, Alder Gaskell. First, I'd like to make a motion recommending to council the payment of the bills in the amount of four hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and nine cents.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin, Alder Kemp?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Just for the sake of discussion, there are a number of payments this, this time around, we have interest payments on bonds in the amount of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Also, third quarter room tax payments to Destination Madison in the amount of thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-three cents. There's also sewer lining servicing that needed to be done in the amount of fifty-five thousand, thirteen dollars and zero cents, and also the Verona Area Chamber of Commerce third quarter room taxes in the amount of seventy thousand dollars exactly.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes, Alder Kemp?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to make a motion regarding the notice of liability claim. I'm recommending that the, the council not approve, I'm sorry, the notice of liability claim.
So, it's a motion to deny the liability?
Correct.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Gaskell, Alder Kemp?
Again, just for the sake of explanation, Mr. Mayor, Christina Carroll of one-one-three Palelight Street, number two oh six, has filed a notice of claim with the city for a slip-and-fall incident that occurred at Fireman's Park on August fifth, two thousand and nineteen. The fall resulted in injuries on Ms. Carroll's right side, as well as her face. She's asking that the city, she's asking the city to pay fifteen hundred dollars to cover her costs, as well as pain and suffering. Wisconsin Statute eight nine five dot five two provides immunity to municipalities for injuries that occur on city property as a result of a recreational activity. In addition, Wisconsin Statute eight nine five dot five two sub two states that there is no duty to keep the property safe for recreational activity, no duty to inspect, and no duty to give warning of an unsafe condition. Based on the statutes listed above, the city's liability insurance carrier recommends that this claim be formally denied.
Questions, comments on the motion? I do have a, a clarifying question for staff. I guess in your opinion, in the current state of the park, is it, is it safe now? I know we don't necessarily have a duty, but I would like to think that the park is safe for people to be in. Mr. Sayer?
Yes, it's safe.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to deny claim, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Anything further, Alder Kemp?
Nothing further, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to ten C, which is Personnel Committee, Alder Gaskell?
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number R dash one nine dash zero four.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one, thank you. Wait, that one's really off. Approving a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Verona and the Wisconsin Professional Police Association LEER Division for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, excuse me, Alder Cole?
Sorry.
Alder Gaskell, anything to add?
Yes, thanks. The current bargaining agreement between the city and the Wisconsin Professional Police Association is scheduled to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. City staff has negotiated an agreement with the WPPA slash LEER and has reached a tentative agreement. Significant changes, terms of the agreement include, this is a three-year agreement, the changes are related to dues deductions, it allows the payout of compensatory time paid to the next reg, regular payroll with appropriate notice. Court appearances, with approval from the chief of police, officers may testify remotely by phone. The police canine handler, the handler will receive thirty minutes of straight time pay at the officer's current rate for care and maintenance of the canine. Base wage increases for representative police officers are as follows, two percent increase on January first, two thousand and twenty, two percent increase on January first, two thousand and twenty-one, and a three percent increase on January first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number R dash one nine dash zero five one, approving a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Verona and the Wisconsin Professional Police Association LEER Division for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Anything further, Alder Gaskell?
No, thank you.
Next, we will move on to ten D, which is the Joint Planning Commission, city town, Mr. Sayer?
Wasn't expecting that. First, first item is.
Happy to do it.
Resolution, and this one we have correct, that's what I was checking. We have resolution, I'm stalling, we have resolution nineteen dash fifty-two, approving an extraterritorial certified survey map that creates two lots at six-four-three-seven Grandview Road in the town of Verona. Proposed ETJ CSM will create two lots in the town of Verona and Grandview Road. The city-town joint planning committee met on October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and voted five to zero to recommend for the approval.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments, or motions? Alder Kemp?
Can I ask what the two lots are being divided for?
Mr. Sayer?
It's a lot split for some existing structures that are out there, which we allow as part of our boundary agreement. So, we typically don't allow that many lot splits, but when they want to break off existing homes, that's when we grant exceptions.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, motions?
Mr. Mayor?
Alda Gaskell.
I move approval of Resolution Number R-19-052, approving an extraterritorial certified survey map that creates two lots at 6437 Grandview Road in the town of Verona.
Motion by Alda Gaskell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alda Kemp, I believe. Anything to add, Alda Gaskell?
No.
Motion before the body. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number R-19-052, approving an extraterritorial certified survey map to create two lots located at 6437 Grandview Road in the town of Verona, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? And that motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Of course.
Then we can skip Adam talking, basically.
Alda Gaskell.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-19-053, approving an extraterritorial certified survey map that creates two lots at 6458 Wayland Road in the town of Verona.
Motion by Alda Gaskell. Is there a second? Second by Alda Cole, I think. Anything to add, Alda Gaskell?
Yes, thank you. The proposed extraterritorial certified survey map would create two lots in the town of Verona on Wayland Road. The city/town joint planning committee met on October 15th and voted five to zero to recommend for the approval.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number R-19-053, approving an extraterritorial certified survey map to create two lots located at 6458 Wayland Road in the town of Verona, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? And that motion passes. Next, we will move on to item 11, which is new business. First up is a discussion and possible action regarding ordinance number 19-953, amending Title 15 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Verona, Wisconsin, relating to the city's electrical code. Is this you, Mr. Sayer?
It's me.
Okay.
So this is a cleanup item. We were directed by the state to update our electrical code by the end of 2019, and the purpose of this is to be consistent with the state electrical code. So this is a, this is a simple kind of cleanup that mostly relates to references of the Department of Commerce, which is now called the Department of Safety and Professional Services. As part of these updates, we took the opportunity to verify that all sections of state statute referenced were correct. We moved and replaced SPF with SPS. Revised language in the code to be compliant with the state electrical code. There's a variety of sections we're referencing, including 15-1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 17, and then 15-4-4, and 15-4-5. We have a redline version in the packets. This was also reviewed by the city attorney, and he had no concerns with it. So, this is a cleanup. This allows us to remain kind of a state, I don't want to say certified, but we have state plan review authority, so we can review the commercial and industrial development plans. We need to clean this up, otherwise they're going to take that away from us. So, this cleanup will accomplish what the state's looking for.
It's good motivation. Questions, comments, motions? Anyone feel like making a motion?
Make a motion.
Alda Cole.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 19-953, amending Title 15 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Verona, Wisconsin, relating to the city's electrical code.
Motion by Alda Cole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alda Cronin. Anything to add, Alda Cole?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 19-953, amending Title 15 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Verona, Wisconsin, relating to the city's electrical code, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? And that motion passes. Next up, we have a discussion and possible action regarding potential litigation regarding claims made by the owner of 210 Noel Way. Is there anything staff is inclined to say in open session? Mr. Sayer?
Thank you. On December 10th, 2018, the common council discussed in closed session the potential litigation against the city by the owner of the property located at 210 Noel Way. No action was taken by the council. This litigation relates to a dispute between neighboring property owners. One of the property owners believes the city has not acted to address property maintenance issues between the owners. Staff is requesting a closed session with the common council to update the council on this potential litigation.
Thank you for that explanation. Any questions for open session? Seeing none. A motion to go into closed session would be in order. Alda Cole.
Move to go into closed session regarding potential litigation regarding claims made by owner of 210 Noel Way. The common council may convene in a closed session, as authorized by Wisconsin Statute 19.85 per N1 per N.G., for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is likely to become involved. The common council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take, discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in a closed session.
Motion by Alda Cole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alda Gaskell. And this is, of course, a roll call vote. If the clerk for this open is to read the roll.
Alda Journey?
Aye.
Alda Kemp?
Aye.
Alda Cole?
Aye.
Alda Posey?
Aye.
Alda Riki?
Aye.
Alda Touche?
Aye.
Alda Cronin?
Aye.
Alda Gaskell?
Aye.
And we will move into closed session as soon as we are off the air. Thank you. All right, it is 8:45 PM, and we are reconvening in open session. Council had a discussion and took no general action. We'll move on to 11C, which is discussion and possible action regarding the approval of the operator licenses. Clerk Clerk.
Need a motion, please, to approve the operator licenses as presented by the city clerk.
So moved.
Motion by Alda Riki. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alda Cole, I think. Any discussion on approving the operator licenses? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the operator licenses as presented by the city clerk signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? And that motion passes. We are on item 12, adjournment. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move to adjourn.
All right, I think Alda Gaskell wanted it more. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alda Kemp. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? And we are adjourned at 8:46 PM. Thank you.